Okay, we'll do the first.
I would like to just to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Basing?
Here.
Bush?
Here.
Chambers?
Here.
Dahl?
Here.
Dunn?
Here.
Lindsay? Stepas?
Okay, items for action. First one is the transfer of Fund 46.
The Johnson block audit was done and Quinn Mitchell completed it basically Thursday, Friday. Would have been about a week ago now. And had a little bit of money left over in the budget. Our recommendation, which needs board approval, would be to transfer 175,000 of that into Fund 46. The remaining balance, and I did not get that from Marsha today, but it only was going to be kind of in that $20,000 range. The 20,000 would stay in fund balance. But by moving 175,000 into Fund 46, it would put just a little over 689,000 into that fund. That will be available starting July of next summer, next year. That we could use for capital maintenance projects.
I'll make a motion when I make that transfer.
Second. Do you know what kind of interest do we get on that deal?
It's in a money market account. Marsha has a breakdown of what has come in in interest over time. So I can get that and-
Just because it's available in July doesn't mean that we have to spend it all.
Correct, right, yeah. And I would certainly caution against going in and saying, "Yeah, we're spending all of it right now." I would, we need to, we need to sit down and look at projects, prioritize, and then-
It's available starting July 2020, but then it's available indefinitely, correct?
Correct.
There's not a window where it closes where we can no longer use it?
As of this moment, correct. I've not come out on the state.
But hypothetically, we could spend it all right away if we wanted to. But then if, as long as we don't take it to zero, you can continue to add to it every year.
Yes. And because the fund had been created then, had been in existence five years, whatever you put in, you could turn around and take out again the next year.
That was the best move to do.
Very beneficial for schools trying to find ways to take care of bigger capital maintenance projects and not having always to go to ref.
So we have a motion second. Any other comments or questions?
Did he ration out the behind the 175 versus the, in Fund 46 versus the 20 in the fund balance?
Part, the recommendation actually did come from Baird in case there was anything else prior to the finalizing of the audit that maybe needed to be charged back to 18, 19 school year instead of, okay, this is, this can't be here, it has to be there. So they recommended leaving just a small amount there to make sure that there was any changes in what budget cycle or what budget year something was billed.
Okay. In past years with a surplus, didn't we, didn't we split it? At least last year we split half into Fund 46 and then half into fund balance?
Last year we saved 100 to fund balance with the intent that it would be-
Rocker's budget.
Yeah, there were, there was leftover budget monies and then the TIF closure was credited to the previous budget year. So there's, that's where that larger dollar amount came into play.
Prior to that, most years it's been a chunk and then leave a piece for any changes to make sure we didn't end up in a deficit year because of a change that happened after we made the transfer.
Yeah.
So it's pretty difficult.
Yeah. And our fund balance is kind of in that 20% to 22% range right now, which is above your board policy and a good comfortable place to be in. I mean, that was helpful when it came to the bond rating, that our fund balance was where it was, that percentage, so.
Our policy's in the teens, isn't it? High teens?
Yeah.
Fifteen.
Fifteen or eighteen, somewhere, somewhere in that range.
Fifteen.
Okay, anyone else? Angie, a call question, please.
Bush?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Basing?
Yes. Okay. Verbal, ranking standards in the report card.
Fortunately, Angie reminded me of this in your board packet. It does come up. Every year, the school board has to basically approve what our academic standards are. And this is basically our list of what we're referring as worth high school credit towards a diploma. And then each of these in the document would be a link out to, here are ed classes, here are art classes, and so on and so forth. And each of those meets the needs for high school accreditation. And then the next part of that is the accountability report card. Here's where we have ranked this past year. The most recent debt is being released or has been released, but it's still embarked. So I don't have access to share with you our most recent testing data. But based on the most recent debts public, here's where our district score, if a district significantly exceeds. These are nothing that is a surprise to you. We shared all these things with you over the course of last school year when we were able to make those public. And then options for students who reside in the Middle Point School District. What you can do, public school, private school, Wisconsin Private Choice Charter School, Virtual School. Those kind, those are, so every school district has to go and make the public aware of these things. So it's basically a formality to get your approval on these things again for this year.
Okay, another question.
I move that we approve the academic standards in the report cards. If you-
I'll second. I'll second. I got just a couple clarification questions.
Yep.
How is, how is nutrition education being addressed in our curriculum?
At the high school, middle school, high school, it would come more in the area of the health curriculum.
Okay.
You know, food-
Is that around food nutrition?
Yeah.
Okay. What about personal financial literacy?
It is a required course for either a junior or senior to earn a diploma. Kit Bakken in the Business Ed Department, it's a semester-long course. And she's responsible, she, every student that comes through here and gets a diploma has to have that class.
Okay. Okay, and then based on the report card, how, I mean, you probably have a general sense of how our data points are trending from one year to next. Do you feel like we're going to be around the same ranking, a little bit better, a little bit worse, or hard to say? Based on what the numbers you've been seeing through the year?
I would say we're going to be somewhere right around the same. You know, I, you know, kind of the survey, give or take, a plus or minus four point. I don't even know if it would be that much, but, but I feel that, that the work that's gone in, the work with students, I think those scores will be pretty consistent. You know, part of, part of, are we, are we two, are we 10, are we 15? Depends on, you know, does somebody else have a banner year? And if our year is a normal year, we may drop because somebody's score is just a little bit better this year. We may move up because somebody above us scored just a little bit lower than we did. But, but that score, that number's going to be pretty close to the same, I would say.
Do we cover, when I was in school, which is a while ago, and we used to have full-fledged home ec classes. Do we have anything at all like that now? Either, either a semester or at least in another class that kids could pick that up and learn how to prepare meals?
We do not have anything that would be a semester-long. Mr. Carey, last year did a, almost like a life skills kind of a course. It was like an independent study that kids could pick and choose projects. And some of the things he would guide them towards is you need to, you know, one of the things that you're going to do has to be in this area to try to help get, get kids some of those experiences. But I'm, I'm trying to think. Tyler, my son graduated in 2009. And I think, I think maybe his sophomore year might have been the last year they actually had a class that was home ec, a specific home ec type of class or off.
I guess I don't see the need for a semester, but I have had at least, probably 45 people in the last few weeks have stopped me and said, you know, that's something that, that we ought to consider putting into some section of some course.
A unit of something, somewhere?
And honestly, I agree with them because it's amazing how many people don't know how to roast.
I think you could expand that to just certain, I'm kind of touching on like basic skills like a light bulb.
Yeah.
Or any, I mean, certain things you could almost expand that whole.
You should refer to that.
Not necessarily a light bulb.
I mean, it's online samples and you-
That's a lot of general, general basic housekeeping.
That's something that you could look at too. I mean, that talks, that's about cooking, but it's about nutrition, about, you know, how to prepare meals, how to do things like that. I know we have one.
And maybe look at new things and it's like, okay, should I eat this or should I eat that?
Right, about labels and all that kind of stuff, yeah.
Who did you say does a little bit of that?
Kyle, I don't remember what it is. I know he's really trying to expand kind of, it used to be automotive care, but now it's well beyond that where it's a lot of just general house things that you-
Car care and home maintenance is where he tries to get kids to, here's a hole in the drywall, go ahead and, you know, repair this. You need to put a light switch in and outlet in. And he'll do smaller units like that within that particular class.
But I think he's even trying to build even more life skill applicable things. I know he did like a whole grocery shopping unit, budget unit last year and those types of things, so. Some sewing, I know he did some clothing sewing stuff, just general sewing and button on or something like that.
And it's a school elective?
Yeah.
Okay.
I know Jenny Wall leaned today in her access time, one of the enrichment opportunities she provided, or several enrichment, tying a tie, ironing a shirt, making grilled cheese, something, you know, I mean, she tried to offer up just a few of those same kind of life skills that, hey, you're going to move out sometime. You need to, this little tool would be good to have in the bag. So I know she tried to offer some of those things too for kids and an enrichment opportunity.
Okay, sounds great. Anybody else have any comments on the motion? Let's call it a question, Angie, please.
Dahl?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Basing?
Yes. Approval of the handbooks.
Okay. Here is the section then, as was called a question. And trust me, I understand why it's confusing and I have multiple conversations. In essence, this section of the handbook has kind of been grandfathered in to address the needs of one of our employees. So the language does, is a little confusing, especially in the proration of district contributions. So an employee hired prior to January 1, 2015, whose individual contract has assignment of at least 50%, and then brackets 75% of full-time equivalency, but not less than full-time 100%, shall have district contribution prorated consistent with the employee's percentage of employment. So the, the problem with the 50 and the 75, when this particular employee was hired, the district's plan, 50%, you've got, you've got benefits. And she is currently working a 70, 50% at least, or sorry, a 75% position. She works 28.15 hours a week, which is 75% of a full-time employee. If her hours were to be lowered a little bit, she's still grandfathered in as long as she is working at least 50%, she would qualify for this benefit. Everybody else, full-time for, for support staff is 37 and a half hours. Everybody else has to get to that number, has to get to at least 30 hours to qualify for benefits, which is the 75%. So I know this is confusing. It is a grandfather clause for one employee. And once that employee decides to leave us, this confusing language goes away and it will be what has been applicable for everybody after January 1 of 2015. So if you have questions, I will try my best to answer.
My first question is, that paragraph you just read, is the 75% number in brackets supposed to be the same thing as the words next to it?
No.
Okay.
And the reason why is when the employee leaves, it will be 75% of full-time equivalency. The 50% will come out because that employee, the only one that this, that 50% applies to will no longer be here. I believe the 75% in brackets is a clarification when the handbook was written to, so that when this person left, everybody would know it's going to 75, which is the practice.
So why is, why is this not a addendum to that individual employee's contract instead of in some global handbook that applies to all employees?
That's a great question. I don't, I don't have an answer for you. The handbook was created probably at the end of my first year. I know, I think probably-
Was that person the only person at that time? Or is that the person, the only person now?
That's the only person now. We had a couple other employees that were part of this clause that had been grandfathered in that when we shifted away from our own food service program to Tahoe, those employees left. So they came off of this language. I know Luke and I would say Lisa probably had quite a bit to do with the handbook creation. So this was put into play.
Doc made a great point. I really think we should take this completely out of the handbook and just put it as the 75, that's what it's supposed to be, and put an addendum into whoever the employee is.
We can certainly do that.
I mean, is that some-
I could get some, I could get some counsel on that as well.
I just, I almost questioned the legality of that, but.
Well, yeah, this is, this was an ignorant question from my standpoint. I mean, so if you've got counsel on that this is the best way to do it, I mean, I'm interested in why this is the best solution. I mean, I'm not opposed to it, it just, it's so, it's, I mean, I don't, it's just very confusing to read. I, I don't know how anyone would see that 75% in the brackets and just assume, oh, that's what's going to go into effect when this person leaves. I mean, there's nothing in the document that says what that means. Because in every other case, and typically in a document, you might, I don't know, you would do, you would do the number in words like 100% and then you would do it in a number, the same number.
Right, right.
And so when it says 50% in words and it's a 70% in a number, I thought that was a typo. I was going to bring it up. So what kind of, what, I mean, who did you consult with to draw this up?
This is not my, this is not my language. This language was in the handbook and had been in the handbook and was just pointed out. And that's why it was tabled, was pointed out because there was a question regards to this. So this language is within this handbook, I would say, since its inception.
But it was tabled in order to do what?
Try to get some, try for, tell me, get clarification as to what this particular, why this particular section was in there and what was the intent behind it.
So since it was tabled, you since have figured out why this is in existence, but you didn't edit it at all?
I have not, no.
Okay, you're just showing to us-
Highlighted portion?
Right.
The highlighted portion, okay, to add a little more clarity to it, basically, okay. I don't have a strong opinion, what do you think?
I think the reason it's in here is so that you're not offering the benefit to an employee outside of, instead of just doing an addendum to an employee's contract outside of, so then employee B comes along and says, why work 63%? You know, employee A has this addendum. This is the addendum I want. This way it is in the handbook across the board. And there won't be an employee B because nobody else was hired prior to January. That way it's in the handbook. I think it's the only reason that it's in there at all, is that it's in the handbook.
Moving on to the next one. Same time.
Which, you mean the tabled list or?
It's in the next page, but-
Oh, the next page?
Yeah, the next page. No, no, I don't know. That was not tabled.
Okay, and here was, here was the case where the number and word did not agree. So that's why these are highlight medical expenses based on the current IRS tax code is the 2,650 in the number. And the words did not match in the original presentation. So just pointing out that we now have it clarified based on that.
Okay, so go back up to the other one.
Yep.
Number two, proration of district contributions. So how can we, how can we make that read a little more clearly? So employer hired prior to January 15.
I think you take the 75 brackets out.
Yeah.
Because that's, I emailed three different times trying to figure out what Rich was trying to tell me, why it's a bit different. I think it's spelled out in paragraph one.
Right, at least 75% of full-time equivalency, hire date after January.
I think you can take that out of the brackets and it will read the exact same.
I think you could change it to 50% to just reflect that it's the same as the wording, if that's how you want to write the document, to have the wording and the number next to each other, just like the 100% is. But if you don't feel like, if you feel like it can be a worded or a number, then yeah, you can just take it out because it says 50% in the word right there.
That makes sense to me.
So do you want 50 or you want to add?
Well, I think that's to say some, oh, you mean the number 50?
You should have the number in there to make it go with everything else.
Yeah, I mean, why does the 100% have the number next to it?
Right.
I guess I'd make that your motion.
Well, usually you have like the number and then, or the wording and then the number.
Okay, just like it says, it says eight hours and then eight in parentheses. Some contracts are written that way. Okay, yeah, so.
Yeah, I don't think we changed that to 50 or changing the intent at all.
I agree.
So I'll change the number to 50%. That's Doc's motion.
I'll make that motion that we approve this section of the handbook with that, with the change of the number 75% to the number 50% on A2. 13.01, A2.
Okay.
Who seconded?
Angie. Larry.
Jeff.
We're on the edge. On the handbooks, Larry, we're on number three. And we're just going to change the 75% to 50% because it's, that whole paragraph is in here because of one employee that we had left over, so it was grandfathered.
Okay.
Okay, let's call a question, please.
Dunn?
Yes.
Stepas?
Sure.
Bush?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Basing?
Yes.
Okay, approval of purchases in excess of 5,000.
Yeah. Every year they, they put this in and it's a cost of 10,500. They budget for it, it's K5. But because it's over the 5,000, I just wanted to bring it to your attention. And the other thing is a request to replace our junior world history textbooks. Again, Terry Cool teaches a class, this has a 2001 copyright date. He's basically replacing it with, in essence, two textbooks for less than one textbook. They, they've broken it down so it doesn't get to be Encyclopedia Britannica of a textbook. So they, they broke the world history textbook into two different time periods. So it's a little bit smaller resource. And that, that cost came in at $8,392. It's a, it's a need. This is one of the better books that he has in his library for junior world history. I said, again, over 5,000. I would bring it to the board, recommend that we approve that purchase as well.
So move to second.
Both Fund 46?
One or both?
Both Fund 46.
A couple of questions.
Yep.
The, the first one, just for clarity, I mean, I'm assuming these resources are kind of the like essential resource package for these teachers in their classroom, both digital and paperback editions?
Yes.
When we talk about like class supplies, textbooks, this is kind of what we're talking about?
Right.
It's just a big package altogether?
Yes.
Okay. And then the world history, is that something that's in the budget already in, under books or under Mr. Cool's budget?
Yes.
It just happens to be over $5,000?
Yes, yeah. And I, he and I had a conversation in the spring of the year and he's like, boy, you know, what do you think? I said, well, put it in your budget request. And if I can hold on to that line item, I will. And when we got to the end of the year, I said, we're, we're at a balanced budget right now with that in there. So if you wish to make this purchase, let's get it rolling and I can take it to the board. Well, and he just came to me recently and said, hey, have they been purchased? I said, no, but it's on the agenda because it is over $5,000, so. But yes, that, that line, that budget amount is in our current budget.
1920 budget?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question on this and I kind of briefly touched on this, you know, earlier. I mean, are we sure that the materials that we are getting are above the standard? Like is, like the best that we can get for the money?
I would say yes. And, and the reason I would say yes is because there are less and less textbook publishers out there. This, this company buys that company and, you know, it, next thing you know, there's, there's maybe only two that you can work with anymore. So, you know, they are, they are quality resources. He got a couple of samples, at least two, to investigate. And the one that we're getting basically is a mirror image of this. In essence, it's just the updated version of this particular resource. But yes, it, I mean, and that's a valid point, but it's just tougher and tougher to find additional resources from places.
Hopefully the best ones we love there, they're weeding out the local quality materials.
Several years ago, he'd asked to replace a different set of textbooks. And we looked at, you know, we're going one-to-one, let's just do digital. So he got a, a price quote for a classroom set and a digital license for all the students. You know, so you get 30 textbooks and, but you have 70 online versions. And the price was more for that than it was to buy 70 textbooks. And you got the online version, in essence, then for free. And it's like, I don't understand why you do that, but that was, I don't know if that was Prentice Hall or what the, which particular distributor that was, but it was more money to just try to get the digital version. So that's kind of where we're at now. He's getting, there'll be some additional resources that are thrown in, some online resources that tie directly to the textbook, but getting 70 textbooks is still cheaper than 30 in an online version.
That's what I was going to ask you, if, if these newer textbooks have online versions or supplements with them?
Right, yeah.
And they do, supplement, of course, yeah.
Okay, next. Call a question, please.
Dahl?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Stepas?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Basing?
Yes.
Plus the business honor roll.
So like now everybody about 10 days or so, so I asked you, you start brainstorming, if you had any thoughts on what businesses you'd like to nominate for state recognition? Have you interested here, if you have any? This would be our fifth year. We can do 0 through 5.
And the deadline is?
August 16th, so.
Did you get any names yet, Joel?
Nobody emailed me back with the names on.
Let's put on our things to do, let's go back to Joel and think of some companies.
Do you have any suggestions?
I think we need a vote though. I don't know if we need to vote, we always take the vote. I guess that we got to the board if you. You know what I'm saying, this is our last meeting before August 16th. So I don't know, that's up to you guys.
Do you have, who was on last year?
Yeah, I sent that out issue 60 that.
Badger Welding, Badger Muffin, Midwest River Tank, Orthopedic Institute at Southwest Health, and SSM Health.
And the year before it was Farmers, Gorgon Funeral Services, and Opera House. And the year before that, Farmer Savings Bank, Krista Mitchell Design, Mon City Bank, Point Foods, Moore Grain, and the first year Cummins and Mitchell Solutions. And it's okay if you don't want to do any, I mean, it's maybe 30 districts in the state that do it. It's just kind of a nice thing to do, so.
I don't mind referencing any businesses that have helped the school out. If anyone has any ideas or suggestions or do you have any recommendations?
The Dahl Cooper was donated and shots were given to us for 50% off. And I don't know the name of the vet in town and I don't know, remember who donated.
Spores, so is that hidden valley kennels?
Sleepy dogs. You know, but that's going to be a huge asset to the district moving forward. So that was one that I got of, maybe pointing out both of it and the kennel.
Which vet?
Um. Oh, I have it on Facebook.
Was it the one in town or was it?
Yeah, it's, it's one of the local, I don't know if it's.
Yes.
Yeah.
Did you?
No, I think it was, no, that wasn't it, the Blackwood one? No, I think it was the.
Military Ridge?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, it was Military Ridge, yeah.
Okay, Military Ridge.
That's wrong.
Yep.
So I have people to go, give it to them all?
Absolutely. When I think of last, there may be a chance that it becomes one of the highlight stories. Then if we have five, because they do like three or four highlight stories. And I think that donation of therapy dogs are pretty good stories. This guy's in school.
Do they really, are they associated with the school at all? Do they shake rate, shake rates them for the earnings?
Associate with the school?
I mean, they.
They do a lot, that's at the elementary.
Do they? That's another, I mean.
So do you need us to make that as a motion?
I think that would be good since that's what we've done in the past.
Do we want to make a motion for those three?
I move every three of them. We can deal with the five, anybody else? Mitch or anybody, anything for our school in last year?
About the restaurants, or like Great Dunk Deli or cater food up here, Midway or. But do they, like, I don't want to diminish that, but do we get a discount on that at all?
Yeah.
Or are we just giving discounts? I don't know, just.
Maybe a good point too with keeping it.
Yeah, a couple, I think a couple is good.
Okay, then save some for next year.
Right.
Okay.
Just remember what you said.
Make a motion.
I move that we.
I have, I have a motion, you want to sign it?
Please sign it.
Thank you.
So who made the motion, I'm sorry?
I did.
Oh, sorry. And Sleepy Hollow?
Sleepy Hollow, Military Ridge, and Shake Rakes.
Shake Rakes.
For the arts.
I think the Shake Rakes is in here too.
Sleepy Hollow.
Can we do that in just a voice?
I think.
Okay, yes. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
If they vote, motion there. Okay, referral staff hires.
We recommend approving Alexandra Driftmeyer to the elementary council position. She comes to us with a little bit of experience. Angie, do you want to share any information through that?
Yeah, so we had a group of us, there were seven elementary and district staff that interviewed, called that, okay, we interviewed five, actually we interviewed four, because one backed out at the last minute. Candidates, she's spent about the last four years at Parkfield. So she does have a few years of experience, but lives, lives in Bardelle. So she's looking to become a huge part of our community here.
In order to be a counselor, you have to have a master's degree, but.
I move that we approve Alexandra Driftmeyer for the 1.0 FTE elementary council position.
I'll second. I just want to clarify that, are any of these hires going to be in closed session if it's being convened?
But the closed session is there, whether, if you want to.
Oh, there is no closed session scheduled, okay.
Yeah, there is a closed session.
It's available.
Oh, I see.
It's available, so if there was some.
That's probably why you're wanting to close session for some reason, okay.
If there was something you wish to talk about, we put it out there otherwise.
Got it, thank you. Okay, so we got a motion, a second, let's do the roll on Angie.
Dahl?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Stepas?
Yes.
Bassing, or excuse me, Bush?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Bassing?
Yes. Okay, referral presentation.
There were great many tiers and an extremely, extremely difficult decision. Caitlin came to me shortly before I left on vacation, just said she has purchased a business in town and had spent most of the time from the end of the school year until about the 18th of July trying to figure out, can I do both of these things? She really did not want to leave the school district. Thanked us for the time, the opportunity, things that we provided for her, a connection for her in the school. And just with a heavy heart, handed a letter of resignation to me and just said, if there was any way I could, I would, I would do both. But we talked about it in fairness to herself and her family.
I'm also going to point out she was a college student, she's going back to school to become a teacher. So in, in addition to trying to run a business and being in school, and when I talked to her too, she was very upset about having to leave, but she just kind of figured out how to do all of them together.
She'd been a great asset to the district and will be missed.
Can anyone make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion. Sorry.
Thank you. And comments, do the roll on it, please.
Dunn?
Yes.
Stepas?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Bassing?
Yes. Furrell to post that position.
Caitlin, it was a one-on-one aide and would be, would have been with a high school student and we still have that need. So we would ask to turn around and repost that, that position is open. I'll skip to letter C, we have a new student in the elementary school that comes to us with a required one-on-one aide. So we would ask to permission to post that position. And then I'll jump back up to B. We're still trying to get some clarification. If you remember at the end of last school year, we had a teacher resign their position and we talked about potentially being able to cover that in-house with the assistant of an aide. And then more conversations, well, student A is not coming back to school, student B wasn't sure. We still have not heard and have reached out to families to get clarification. So we're asking to have, at least be proactive at trying to get responses. Are the two students coming back to school, yes or no? Both of them would be in the senior classes this year. Both have some options, other options that they are exploring. So it's not, we're not 100% sure whether or not they're coming back. But if they come back, we would need that aide position to, to work and do some job coaching and some other kinds of support for those students. So in essence, we would be asking to post potentially three positions, three aide positions.
And just, just to clarify, that those two students could not also be helped by filming, the person filming Caitlin's role at a 1-0?
No.
Okay.
Yeah. Caitlin's position is a one-on-one aide position.
Oh, it is, okay, okay.
As far as budget impact, is, I know there's some flow-through dollars available to the school.
So this year when we budgeted, when I budgeted with Marcia, we actually took those flow-through dollars and budgeted for six, 50% of six of the support staff salaries. So our flow-through money is essentially allocated now towards salaries instead of just sitting in a pot. So it would go from state money, you know, Mitch and I, when, when the teacher resigned, we crunched some numbers about what it would cost for basically a full-time aide versus a 55% teacher. And there was some savings, I think it was $6,000 or something. But the, and then obviously Caitlin's position is budgeted for. The elementary student would be an addition that we didn't have budgeted for. But, you know, we don't really have an option at this point. So we would readjust our, our flow-through, we'd get state reimbursement. You know, it'd probably come down to adjust, it would impact our Fund 10 to 27 transfer.
We would get transfer services, the one coming in with a required one-on-one.
We would get the transfer services.
And there would be some costs, like next year we could apply for high aid cost and stuff once we know the cops are having that student here. So, yeah, there, I mean, there are, there are some things, but it's, I, I didn't leave that 150,000 a flow-through, we actually allocated about this year into salaries. So it's not like that public money is just hoop and wind this right now.
But since.
Sorry.
But since we, we have an additional child in elementary, we still do the same amount then?
Yeah, the, the formula, it's, it's a formula that state uses now for figuring out that federal, so it's not just a straight one-to-one, it goes back to percentages and a whole bunch of things. And I think it's a three-year average and, you know, I mean, it impacts and the state does have other options. You know, so if we get transfer of service, so if new students move in that cost us money, we, we can do that through the state. Any students that are considered high-cost students, if they exceed $30,000, we can apply for reimbursement of up to 90%, about 90% for that. But there are other things, but yeah, it's.
What determines one-on-one?
Typically the level of.
Behavioral issues.
The level, no, the level of their disability and how it impacts either academically, could be behaviorally, this, you know, could be some medical needs, it could be assistance with some personal care, it could be academics. Those are situations that are all determined by the IAP team.
The additional one for the high school, these students are seniors. So this will be a one-year hire then, Mitch?
Yes.
Did you say?
Yep.
All right, and it will be posted as that?
Yes.
Yes.
And A and B were in the balanced budget?
Correct. And the high school one is dependent on those two students.
Correct, yes.
Yep.
But if one comes back and the other one doesn't?
One will need it.
Then we just need one.
Well, if, if either one of the two come back, they will need it. One, on their own, they would also need it. There, there's some job coaching that the teacher last year was doing through a community-based site. So this person would be doing some job coaching and a community-based program as well as some academic support.
So the one-on-one in the elementary, this is a, this is a specialized student that's now in our district?
Right, they moved into the district.
Okay, and so can you just lay out what, where the fund, where the set of money for that salary comes from as far as money we get for the, from the student? And then there's transfer of services? And then there's specialized budget?
Yeah. So I, I mean, we would have to, I'd have to sit down with Marcia and.
Okay.
reallocate and figure out. And essentially if it comes from special ed money and we exceed that, then it becomes a Fund 10, 27 transfer at the end of the year. Special ed is never totally covered by just special education funds. I remember last month Mitch said the transfer was less this year than it had been in other years. But there's always a transfer from general education money to help cover the cost of special education. Because special education is not funded two-thirds of the, the way that it was supposed to be when it was created. So it, essentially it would fall within the specialized budget and then through a transfer cover, whatever, could not be covered in that.
What kind of salary range, Mitch? Do, what will we expect for an assistant now?
I think, I think the beginning level, entry level is $13 an hour or $13.50 an hour. I can't remember off the top of my head. But that is where, you know, the assistants that were hired last year were on step one of our pay, of the support staff pay scale. So, and they worked 36 hours a week.
Do we have a motion?
I'll check.
We do, Mark, we.
Certainly can.
I move that we approve to post the positions in APAC.
I'll second. With one-on-one assigned duties, there's, there's no other duties you could give to that employee? Am I correct in saying that?
Typically how that works is if, in that situation, if that student does not show up, that day if they're sick, they're, they got a doctor's appointment or something, then we will assign that person to another area to give more support. But because the IAP says this student gets this aide, that's the assignment.
And typically, one, you know, students with a one-to-one like this, there's not the ability to go and, and help others in the room. They have such significant needs that they need somebody with them at all times. Where oftentimes we were talking about, you know, many of our support staff work to, are assigned to a class. They can help any person in that class, you know, they're assigned to the class maybe because of a few specific students, they go to those students first. But if they're doing well, they can help everyone. Typically a one-to-one, there's not that ability to be able to extend yourself out. But we always look to reassign them if we know the student's going to be gone, is sick on vacation or, or whatever. And we did that quite a bit. Angie and I actually came up with like, this is what we'll do first, this will be second, what will be third if, you know, the students aren't on medical leave or multiple days or whatever. So they always have something to you.
So one last question, the, the replacement for Kate Finley, of course, is understandable. B and C here Mitch, with, can we be adding employees or her replace, is B a replacement?
C, B would be a replacement. B, B was kind of our initial plan when we got the resignation. B was in our initial plan and was in the budget.
B was more of a reason, instead of trying to find a 55% teacher, we would be able to replace that teacher with a support staff. And then a current teacher would case manage the student's paperwork. But the, the assistant would help provide the services. So it's replacing a teacher, that was 55%. And C is new because of a new student.
All right.
So we're getting some small net savings on B.
Uh huh. Yeah, I'll let, yeah, take home.
Correct.
Well, and you stated, how long's Kate been here?
Um, four, five years.
So if you raise something, you enter that, we can say a little bit.
Have we, have we reached out to the one person we had to eliminate or we made?
We have not, I haven't actually done anything with these. You know, and obviously they, it will be posted on weekends. So some, it, what I did do is I looked at the handbook to make sure that when we laid off, that there wasn't like a clause saying they automatically get to come back and there's not. But they would be able to apply and be considered for those positions if they're still interested.
In the past, do, do you get candidates that are seeking a teaching license or?
Oftentimes. And that's one of the reasons, like the part B one, we actually waited to ask, you know, for now. Because if we would post this position in April or May, oftentimes you do get teachers that haven't found jobs and then over the summer they find a job and then they resign. So in my experience, it's always been better to wait closer to the school year. When I was teaching, I would say consecutively, I think I've had five or six teachers work for me as support staff that have then, you know, eventually moved on to the teaching. But for. But for people who don't have teaching, who haven't been able to get a teaching degree or a teaching job, they will take it to help build their resume. And obviously they have a lot of skills that can be an attribute here as well, so. I don't know if we've had that experience so much, but I had it a lot in, when I was teaching.
We have two down at the elementary school. Better licensed teachers that were working as aides for us.
Okay, let's call a question, please.
Dahl?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Stepas?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Bassing?
Yes. Okay, I don't have a reason for closed session, please, anybody else? And I guess we could, make a motion to adjourn.
So move. Second.